Okay, with that, I'm gonna call the subcommittee meeting of Wakefield Board of Appeals. For Monday, May sixth to order here. With the roll call members, Chip Tarbell.
I am here.
And my name is Tom Lucy, I'm obviously here. One agenda item, I will. Read. The notice of the meeting here. Consistent with the governor's orders, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and to listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one, three oh one, seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID eight two five. One four five four zero six four one, passcode two two one three five two. Please use only dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. The meeting will be. Audio with visual, video recorded in compliance with the American with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator. William Renault, town engineer at seven eight one, two four six, six three oh eight. As far in advance as the event is possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make a reasonable. Arrangement to remove any accessibility barrier for you. Jenna tonight is called to order. And then case twenty four ten zero, one nineteen, one twenty seven, one thirty five, Nahant Street, the residence. Is at Nahant LLC. So again, I appreciate everyone's patience on that slight delay. And with that, Mr. Parnos, what we really want to do tonight is maybe quickly go through the material. Game plan for Wednesday evenings. That's okay with. With you. Chip, are you on board with that as well?
Yep, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. I think for a lot of the materials, I think we don't, you know, all your transmittals, your DPW memo, the traffic memo, I don't think we need to go through that tonight. Because we know as far as TAC goes, your meeting again, there's another meeting on this Friday. Probably best that maybe we can stick to what SV Design did and then the site plan. Does that sound right? Chip, you good with that?
Yeah, maybe give us a little update on where you stand with your engineering, who this engineer firm is. What they've started to look at, all that type of stuff. Give an update on your team.
I see Mr. Cameron on the, on the line. So I think we're about to find out.
So that's a good segue. So tonight. I have with me Scott Cameron from Cameron Moore and Warren Cameron Group. Stefano Basso, and I do have Scott Thornton because there has been some significant back and forth on traffic. Scott. Did a transmittal to Bill Renault. In which he outlined in detail some of the items that are outstanding and kind of set up. Pretty. I wouldn't say general, but a, a parameter for transmitting those additional materials. But we certainly have a good starting point. Where, from where. We are in a, with regard to site plan and where we intend to locate the building. Again, we've been talking about this for a little while. That we all collectively thought it was a better idea to center the building in the middle of the. In the middle of the site, you might recall, we had it pushed all the way to the left hand side. And one of the major considerations that motivated this site plan redesign. Came from the fire department in which they had a concern that they would not have. Full access to all sides of the building. And when we looked at that, we thought he was right, you know, that it just made sense. From a traffic circulation standpoint, not only a public safety standpoint. That it would make the project better, it would make it breathe a little better if we centered the building. So Scott's been working very hard on what that might look like in conjunction with Stefano. And in conjunction with Scott Thornton, who's been rerunning traffic. We have a better idea of what the traffic circulation through the site is going to look like. And we do have for organizational purposes, if you want, we've got a little PowerPoint, you want us to put that up?
Yep, but i- in general, like on those DPW and the traffic.
Yep.
My, my goal is to have the town subject matter experts present when that stuff is presented. So that everybody's on the same page and it's not, it was, he said this, and then I go back and hear from DPW. You know, that's not my understanding, etc. So Chip, that's kind of where my head is on that, right? Same with the traffic.
Yeah, I think we've been saying that from the beginning is that, well, I mean, I think it's good to look at the site, I think it's good to understand if the. Current engineers have brought any light to what the old engineers did or where we stand with that because it's been a while since we. We had site concepts, we didn't have real engineering site look.
Right, I agree. So I think there's some value to looking at the site plan as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So just to recap, if we could share screen, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Ten million dollar question.
Took a while, but we're here.
Just to give you a bit of a recap, so as I indicated. Warren Cameron Group, Scott Cameron is here on their behalf. SV Design is represented by Stefano Basso, I am here. On behalf of the Parnos Law Group, Scott Thornton is here on behalf of Vanessa Associates. And we will add him to the development team slide deck. If you could, Stefano, go scroll through, reacquaint everyone with the proposed development site. You're all familiar with the site. Have you guys walked the site, by the way, before I continue? From the ZBA standpoint?
Not as a group, no.
Do you want to?
I think many of us have done it individually.
Okay.
Jason, because if you do it as a group, it's then gonna be a meeting.
Yeah. Got it.
Well, what we might do is I might offer members the opportunity to do it on Wednesday night, Chip, and if we gotta advertise, we gotta advertise it. It is what it is.
Just let me know if you need access to the site and I'll accommodate it. We're a little. Careful about public access to the site for all the liability reasons. So we don't want to necessarily invite members of the public within the site, someone slips and falls. We don't want to deal with that headache.
Yeah, if, if, if we had to, we, you're just, to avoid that, you might have to do more than one visit if folks want to walk around up there.
Just let me know.
Yep.
So. You'll recall there are two residential dwellings that front Nahant Street. And then there's that commercial building in back with a bit of a gravel yard, some commercial storage way in back. And then there's that rock outcropping that's, that's, that's toward the rear of the site there. With some vegetation, you've all seen it, you know what it looks like. Next slide, please. So as I indicated, we, we took a lot of the comments. And particularly the public safety comments, and that's what led us to this revised site plan. And the revised building plan, and you already got a bit of a sneak preview of the revised design and building plan. With regard to how the roof line changed and how we pulled the building back a little bit. I seem to recall you were concerned about. The look of the original design and how, and, and when we superimposed it behind the building, you know, the existing. Dwelling structures that it really didn't feel right, it didn't look right. So in pulling the building back and reducing the roof line and shifting. Where the fifth floor is as opposed to the fourth floor, shifting the higher. Aspect of the building to the back of the site. Allowed us to present something that was less imposing with regard to what's the existing streetscape. Next. So I'm gonna open it up through you. To Scott Cameron and he can walk you through the, the, the new site design.
Good evening, like make sure you guys can hear me.
Yep. You're good.
So thanks for having me in the, in the team tonight. Just for the record, my name is Scott Cameron. Professional engineer and owner of the Moore and Cameron Group at sixty six Elm Street in Danvers, Massachusetts. Just by way of a little background on me, you know, I've known the, the, the forces of the ownership group here. For the, the better part of the last two decades, I've been professional practice for over twenty years, actually started. My career down in, down in Saugus, Wakefield, where I used to do a lot of single family housework back in the day. And Jason had reached out to me a few months ago. When, when notice came in that Tony unfortunately was leaving the firm. And the, the ownership was interested in making a change of engineers. So over the last, last few months, I have been, you know, we've been working out details on our side. But I have been rapidly trying to get myself up to speed with this project. And what does that mean from a technical perspective? Well, we, we were, we, I start here. With the, 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 the concept plan that, that you last seen with the building centered on the property. And, and two means of egress looping around the building, so that's kind of where we started with the concept. And we have been undergoing a lot of our own internal due diligence. Taking, you know, effectively handoff from Tony, who has been very gracious and, and open to spending time with me. Going through the project. And. And what you see tonight, what we did include is, is the latest site plan. Where we've, we've started to, to go through some of our engineering exercises and looking at not only the horizontal, but the vertical design of the site. This plan only presents to you the horizontal. But what, what will be forthcoming, it's at a window, we're, we're, we're targeting early June. And I'll, I'll talk about the schedule a little bit in a moment, but what you will be seeing coming soon is a full, a full permit plan set. That you're accustomed to seeing with all the technical, technical. Information on the grading, drainage, utilities, site preparation, erosion controls. Lighting, landscaping, construction details, all that information. That will be coupled with a technical report. Been speaking with Bill Renault earlier today, we're, we're starting our coordination too. With the engineering staff on the extent to which they, they would need information like hydrant flow, flow data. If they need that, or CCTV video inspections of the sewer, the sewer system. We're scheduling all that work, there could be some of that already done that the town just has as part of their, their programs for, for maintenance of the utilities. We'll also be conducting soil testing in the next week or so. On site to, to get, get into the, into the ground and see what we're working with there. We, we know what we see from the surface, but. It's really important to understand what we're dealing with for soil conditions. On the site, especially for stormwater management. So as all this, this information is coming together relatively quick. We're gonna be getting all that information too. As it stands with the current site design, we worked with Stefano and Scott Thornton. This design has, we've done our best to incorporate as much of the feedback. As I've been able to read and, and hear from the, the development team. You have a, a single direction entrance into the site off in Nahant Street. Which we've engineered twenty foot wide to meet your fire apparatus route with. There are angled spaces on that to reinforce the one directional flow of traffic as well as some parallel spaces that we expect. Would be more of your, your fifteen minute quick drop off type of spaces for. Ubers and Amazon deliveries and things like that, that are pretty common with this, this use. He's coming around the building in the back, the parking aisles would widen to twenty four feet. That would be a two directional. Travel, travel route. There would be an entrance to the garage in the back that would service the back part of the garage. So there are parking spaces, you can see that come up throughout the middle of the building, and then you're parking around. That will continue two directional back out to Nahant Street on the easterly side of the property. Where you find the, the garage entrance to the front portion of the garage, so both of those would come in and dead end, we've. Made the site a little bit more efficient. In that regard, with the single access instead of the, the, the two directional access garages. As well as looking at reconfiguring, you know, Stefano's worked with us on reconfiguring the ground level floor plan. We've moved the trash room from the east side of the building to the west side of the building. At an area where we can get that out to a, your waste pickup trucks. And we've provided handicap access and pedestrian routes around all sides of the building. Looking at a minimum of five foot wide sidewalks. With curbs around the full perimeter of the building, handicap curb ramps, handicap cap parking. Full handicap access into and out of the building for multiple, multiple entry points. And then of course, along the front edge of the property, cleaning up the front edge with a new, a new five foot wide sidewalk. A little bit of a, a green, green buffer to the curb line. As well as the, the formalized curb cuts and curb ramps that you're, you're accustomed to seeing. We did, we did also include some of the zoning parameters and how this project. Plots with, with the, both the SR and the, the business zoning districts that fall on this property. Set informations on the plans as well as a parking calculation, where we're currently sitting at a hundred thirty seven parking spaces total. That includes almost all but twelve of them are full size parking spaces of nine by eighteen. So it's about eight point seven percent, we have twelve compact spaces towards the back of the site in the southwest corner. Where we situated some of them under an overhang of the building, and the others in the very back where they had, they had the most maneuvering room. To get in and out. There are four stack parking spaces on the west side of the property as you're coming in. Typically, what we've done in these situations is those would be attached to a, a single, a single unit. So somebody comes in and they want an extra parking space. We typically try to couple those together, but that's all part of the future parking management that the, that the, the owners would. Would implement on the property. But we've, we've definitely implemented those on several projects, especially. Recently where, you know, we're trying to minimize our, our footprint of, you know, pavement in a pervious area. Those are four spaces that you don't need a full travel lane to get in and out of. Where folks just have cars typically sitting there because they don't use them as often. But it's just the second vehicle for, for that, for that apartment. Of course, we have the handicap parking mixed into this as well, so we've been working on accommodating all that in full compliance with. Mass Architectural Access Board requirements for handicap parking, and there are three of those spaces plus the loading, loading zones outside the building. And so I, I think, just to reiterate, we're, we're very early in the design stages. We've, we've taken the preliminary plan and done quite a bit of polishing to get it to this, this level of detail. We're feeling very comfortable with, with the layout right now. From a horizontal perspective, and what we're working on is the rest of the. Engineering that goes, goes be, be below, effectively below that with the utilities. And then vertically how that will all, all work out with the grading. But I think not to beleaguer the, the, the topic. I'll, I'll pass off to, back to the team. Talk a little bit about the building design.
Just before you do that, I'm gonna just put some markers down that people are gonna be interested, I'm not looking for an answer tonight. But I'm hoping the development team can be ready. For when these issues come up. People are gonna have a lot of concern about the tandem parking. People I think are gonna have, you're gonna probably talk about TAC, a lot of concern about that. If you go to the west side of the site, just past the tandem parking, there's a little jog in the road there. Does that accommodate appropriate space for a fire engine and other emergency vehicles? We've also had some residents, if you go to the west side, almost at the bottom of your screen. There's some houses at an elevation much lower than the lot that you're on that have experienced some. Stormwater issues with water coming from that site.
Yeah, which ones? Just so I'm, I'm certain.
Right in that area, yeah.
Yeah.
Down in there. I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the street, but I've been out there. There is a decent elevation change there.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen it, I think I know what you're talking about.
Yep, so a lot of the neighbors that are, that live down there are very concerned about stormwater management. So that'll come up. And then it might be too early, but how are you planning to heat this building?
So Stefano question.
Electric.
It has to be electric, there's no more gas.
That's what I mean. So are you, does this site plan contemplate space? That would. You know.
You could probably need a transformer.
Yeah, so if you look in the north, northwest corner, yep, we've, we've started to map out locations for a transformer. Yeah. So that's a thirteen by thirteen box.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure that the box represents something that will be able to support a hundred units.
Yep.
And so we're looking at realistic size of the transformer.
Have you started working with Wakefield Municipal Light yet?
We, I have not reached out to them, but if they are available, I'm certainly happy to do that. The more information we get now, the better.
Again, just laying a marker out there, I'm not expecting an answer tonight or even Wednesday night, but it, it's something that will come up that we're gonna want to learn about.
Yep. I appreciate that.
Anything else before we jump over to design?
No, I, I think wastewater is gonna be huge. Yeah, I think wastewater is gonna be big. You know, everybody's still concerned about being able to get a fire truck around in the tight corners and. You know, if, if somebody else other than a compact car parks in the compact spaces. Will you still be able to get a ladder truck around there? You know, those are, those are the questions. And as I look at it, I don't think there's anything you can do, but there's. Very little, if any, green space on this site. And that's gonna be, again, as Tom has stated, a marker that people are gonna go to.
Before Stefano starts with his presentation, if I may, he did, and he'll be presenting this. Provide a landscape and lighting plan, and I know Scott mentioned that it would be among his. Transmittals, but I believe we have one included within the design set. So I, and I don't expect there to be any overlap in that. I think, I think Stefano and SV Design will be handling the landscape and lighting plan. Is that, is that your understanding, Scott?
Yeah, they will, there's, there's a lot of coordination between the two as we, as we go through the design process, this is a, a very, it's a multi disciplinary. Effort. So yeah, I just wanted, I, I mentioned those plans as a, as a matter of, they, they will be i- i- as part of the complete set of. Site plans that you see.
So, you know, I know there's almost no green space here. But I'll ask the question, is there a landscape architect as opposed to SV Design? Does SV Design have a landscape architect? On staff that is looking at. Trees, plantings wherever we can jam them in there.
We don't have a landscape architect.
So who's doing that?
We do some landscape design in-house, so that's what we've included on our landscape plan.
All right, you may want to start thinking about a landscape architect though, because. I don't, maybe your plan's fine, but. You know, one thing I, I'm also gonna be looking at as we move forward is a snow plan. Not that we get snow anymore, but if we were, where do you put any snow on this site? So, you know, those are the things we look at down the road from a management standpoint.
And I think it, you're gonna, we're gonna see in the renderings up front. That, that the pulling back of the building, as much as I'd like to, it pulled back more from Nahant Street. You're gonna need as much screening as possible on that wall that runs along Nahant Street. And I think we're gonna want some. People with some subject matter expertise looking at what the best solutions are there, what's gonna, and then what's gonna thrive there. And screen the building, so. Suggestion, but you know, obviously you guys don't do it, you under. All right, let's, let's, Chip, you ready to go to design?
Yep. All right. Great, the architectural site plan. Matches Scott's a little bit of additional information on what's going on inside the building on our plan. We do have some of the landscape information called out here, we have more of the landscape information called out on a separate plan. That has some information on species tagging, also the site lighting is on that plan. We have the two legs of the parking garage. The front running parallel with Nahant Street, as Scott mentioned, has the garage door in here on the east side. The leg of the parking garage that runs away from the street has the garage door at the end here, they both dead end. The lobby pedestrian entrances of the building are located on either side in between those two garages. So there's more of a primary entrance here with the management leasing office. On the east side, it opens up to the resident outdoor space, that's about, you know, about a thousand square feet or so of. Lawn and planted area out here. On the west side entrance, this is the mail and package room. So one of the comments that we received that a previous meeting was about pedestrian access, we're adding the sidewalk. Along Nahant Street, how do people circulate through and around the site? So Scott mentioned that we have a full loop of sidewalk around the building now, that's helpful, so. This side. We have some loading spaces, this is where someone would come in, they're dropping off mail or packages, they would come in here, use the loading spaces. We also have some interior bike storage, so we would have vertical bike storage racks in the garage here. So we've carved out a couple of nooks where you could fit some bikes here, in addition to having some. Utility space for water power coming into the building. We have our elevator bank located right in the middle here, at the crux between the two lobbies and the two wings of the building. So two elevators and a fire stair, you can get in to this lobby from either side of the garage and circulate up through the building. The trash room was relocated over here on the west side. It works well with the, the site grading. We also had received a comment from a neighbor on this side about concern with trash noise, so back here. Dumpster load in, load out would happen on the west side of the site. And then our second fire stair is up here towards the end of the leg of the building that would egress out into the parking lot. Moving up the building, pretty similar schemes we had before, instead of the. L shaped building with the jog, we have a little bit more of a J, J shaped building, trying to push the massing towards the center of the site. We've included some bump outs along the front to provide a little bit of depth. And change of texture and siding materials, especially along the Nahant Street side. As you go around the building, we've added balconies in certain locations. That provide a little bit of extra depth and shadow line on the building. We've also done a few different types of. Bump outs, we have traditional bay windows, in some spots we have some. Smaller box bays, and on this corner, we've bumped out a little bit of a square shaped. Bay projection. We've also stepped the building in. I think about five feet, four or five feet here in these locations, so those are spots where going up the building. We have a full setback. We have a full setback and a change of siding in those locations as well. The building does have a bit of an overhang here where this stretch sits over some of the parking spaces that are below it outside. In our effort to reduce the overall building square footage and increase parking and exterior space. We were able to do that by moving some of the massing over some additional parking spaces here, so that helped us to reduce the height of the building along the Han Street wing to keep it at four stories in that area. So that was the floor plan for levels two, three, and four. This is the fifth floor plan. So you can see the roof line below the fourth floor. The vertical circulation comes up in the middle of the building here, the common, common space here with the roof deck for residents. And then we only have fifth floor apartments running down the leg here towards the back of the building, running away from the Han Street. And you can see some of the roof lines for the balcony overhangs, parts where the building is stepped in, we got a little skinnier. And some of these roof lines that terminate at the fourth floor, so we see the roof below on the fifth floor plan. Looking at the exterior. Heading west towards downtown, this is the view from the east. So you can see the, the two direction in and out driveway here in the foreground of the neighbor's house. This is the four-story piece of the building, and you can see that the the fifth floor leg of the building is not visible from this angle. You can't see the part in the back where the elevators go up either. This is sort of the same scheme that we had talked about last time with, you know, we moved away from the red brick. And we've introduced fieldstone veneer to the base of the building, so the fieldstone wraps, wraps around on all sides. Covers the garage. And then up above, we have a mix of clapboard, smooth panel siding. The color scheme is more in line with what you see in the neighborhood, a lot of traditional lighter colored grays. We have the same black sash windows, but we've introduced a little bit of a darker gray trim throughout the building to give it a little bit more of a contemporary feel. The lines with what you see in new construction today, and we've mixed in pale blue. A pale blue siding at some select accent locations.
So let me ask you a couple of questions. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna get in deep into the design here. I'm gonna wait for Wednesday night to that. Couple of things that would be very helpful, I think, for members to have, if you mark the height of the, of the peak there of your building, as well as the height of the peak of the building next door. Some of these renderings, as you see, I know it's probably the computer, you know, you got wires running over the top of the building. If you see what I mean there. See if you can get rid of those. They might be confusing to neighbors and to others. So if you could clean that picture up a little bit, add those heights.
Yeah, one of the things people, one of the things people really want to understand is how tall is this building compared to the houses around it? So if you have a feel for the houses on all sides of this, it would be good to have some sort of comparison. To say, you know, our building is X amount of feet, the neighbors is X, is Y. So that, and the other thing to do with your renderings, and I'm sure they're computer generated as well. I'm pretty sure you're not gonna be planting trees that are hotter taller than the neighbor's house. So either take them out or have them be realistic.
Yeah, I would, that's a comment that we're gonna see later.
We get that all the time.
As Chip brought it up, though, if you can make sure your plans are coordinated. Like, on, when we go to the first page of your design, you have the sidewalk ending, and you have plants in the middle of the sidewalk. First page of your design. Just want to make sure, no, of the design that you sent Friday. They're marked your plans as Stefano. It's just a larger point that make sure your landscape, your design, everything is coordinated.
Where, where are you looking on the plan?
On the cover sheet of one of the documents you sent. Stefano has your, it has your firm's name on it.
Okay, we'll take a look.
You're talking about this?
Yeah, I think that's it. I can't really see it, but that, if you see the plants down the bottom there, they're out in the middle of the sidewalk, and they're not showing the sidewalk. It's just a point, like I said, I don't want, that, that, that's a minor thing. It, but over right there, that's the one. You, you see what I mean? You just gotta have in the tree, you know. The position of that tree doesn't look to me to be where the tree was that we just saw. I just want to make sure everything is aligned in all the plans that you're sending us. Because the, this picture doesn't appear aligned with what we just saw. And to, to Chip's point, as I look at those trees out front, you know. I- i- if you want to show them with mature trees, that's fine, but also show them with what the trees are gonna look like when you plant them, so people can see what they're getting day one.
Okay. Yeah, we can make those updates.
And just, again, look through all your plans, make sure they're all on the same page, so we're not looking at different things depending on what we're looking at, the landscape plan versus the site plan versus the design.
Yep, okay.
And just so you understand, that when the board says massing, right, they won't understand how tall the proposed building is versus all the buildings around it. And how does it relate, if at all?
All right, you, heading away from downtown, heading east from the west. Can see some of the five-story massing in the back here. The building is about seven feet, I think it was, further back than the older scheme. So we have a little bit more space for those trees that we were talking about up front. Then same view without the neighbor's house in the way. You can see the slope roof that we've added to the top floor, untypical around the building. We also have a roof wash introduced at the floor line of the top floor. So in front of the building, that's at the, the floor line of the fourth floor. At the back of the building, that's at the floor line of the fifth floor. This is a location with a two-foot bump in, so we've switched to that newer siding, and we have standing seam metal roof wash at some of these bump ins here. So a little bit of an extra detail above the garage. Standing seam metal around the top of the building here. On the east side of the building here, we have the view of the main lobby with the leasing office and the landscaped area over here. You can see a little bit of a closer view of one of those typical bay, bay window bump outs with the roof line wrapping around the top. And a typical balcony here with the roof at the fourth floor. As we move over to the five-story portion of the building, we've terminated those bay windows here at the fourth floor, so it doesn't run all the way up. We're trying to use some of these details to bring down the massing of the building, to add variation on the depth of the facade here. And then this is an example of that, I think it was four-foot step in, so we've transitioned to a white panel siding here with one by trim on the face of the panel. And we've broken the sloped roof line here, again, to help break up the height of the building running along the facade. Switching over to the west side of the buildings, this is the mail and package room lobby here with the loading drop-off zone on the one-way drive. Can also see the openings in the garage, similar to how we had before. They have a black metal fencing infill for security, but those are openings that are in the garage all, all around the building. This side is similar bump in as well, with the bay windows. And then another step in of the building here. This is an example of the box base, so that's a one-foot bump out with some Juliet balconies. So it stays under the projection of that roof line wash at the top floor, but it just steps out to break up the massing a little bit there. And we, we've used more of a decorative tree concept and decorative plantings around the lobby entries of the building. More of a simple planting scheme in some other areas in the parking lot.
Is the parking garage, and yeah, we don't need to worry about materials at this point, but is the parking garage an open-air garage, or is it a vented garage?
Open air.
So where, can you point out where all the openings for the garage are? Cause like, I don't, I don't see many. Is it below the bays?
Yeah, so they are. They're shown in plan.
Are they shown in, in elevation on your renderings?
They are shown in the renderings. They're also on the architectural elevations. Can see them on all of these plans, all these elevations as well.
And that's, that's enough open air? Has an engineer looked at this yet?
Yeah, we, we do the open-air calculations.
You do, okay.
Yeah, we're also using open-air garage door, graded garage door.
Well, that's what made me ask the question, because I heard you say that, so. So we don't have to worry about where the, where the ventilation is, where the fans are, any of that stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and then we have typical samples of all the materials, and we can provide physical samples. If that's helpful, we can drop those off at town hall or wherever is convenient.
When, when we get to that point. We're nowhere clear, close to that at this point.
Okay. We have a typical building section that calls out the construction assemblies and shows the building heights and alignments in greater detail, and also breaks out, you know, what that the exact assembly of each component is here. For those that are interested.
Yep. Okay. Tom, I'm good. You, you need to see anything else?
No.
So we did have a short update on traffic. Is Scott Thornton still with us? I don't think, did you want to hear about where we're at? I know you were at the last TAC meeting, but there's been some back and forth since then.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna wait until TAC's completely done. I'll be, I'm gonna try to tune in on Friday morning. For the next TAC meeting on this too.
Okay, so for efficiency purposes and staffing the meeting on Wednesday properly, who do you want there, other than myself? I was planning to have everybody, but it doesn't.
Yeah, I don't think we need, I don't think we need traffic. I'm gonna wait till our guys are ready to go. I, I, I think with Mr. Cameron should walk through the site plan like he did here. And I think Stefano should walk through the design, and I think. I think that would cover it, Chip.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll be consistent with the TAC until TAC tells us what we need to know and that, that Scott's free reply to all their issues, then that I don't want to hear about traffic three days, and I don't quite honestly want to not, not, sorry Scott, not that traffic's not the most exciting thing in the world, but you know, until TA, in order to get the neighbors all riled up, until TAC has come back with their recommendations, I think it's a, you know, we need to have that meeting after they've met all TAC's requirements. And then with all our, with our, all our town officials there as well and have a lively one-time or two-time traffic conversation.
Right, yeah. If, if you recall, Mr. Parnell, that's been our strategy all along here. We let TAC finish everything. Let them be at the meeting. And they can talk about all the back and forth they've had and, and, and all of that, so. I don't want to really, other than to let board members know and members of the public know that there's a TAC meeting Friday morning. And then following that, if things are gonna get resolved or TAC's ready to put the final memo together, then I need to coordinate a date where the chief, lieutenant Anderson, our traffic consultants can come to one of our regularly scheduled board meetings, and if we have to do a special meeting for that, that might be fine too, so. Cause if that is to Chip's point, if it's gonna, I think that's the meeting where people from the neighborhood are gonna be really focused. You know, maybe we, we, I'm contemplating a special meeting, and we can talk about that on Wednesday night.
Yeah, you know, everything from, from the, with you, Tom, the, the concerns that are with the neighborhood is one, safety, two is traffic, and three is the size and mass of this building and the number of units. Those are, those are really the issues that the neighbors, the town, and ourselves have. So.
So if you don't mind. We obviously have our hearing on the eighth. And we're gonna go through basically another iteration of what, you know, we, we talked about tonight and maybe even answering and incorporating some of your comments, answers to those or filling more detail and based on this discussion tonight. So that's the eighth. And your next hearing is when, on the twenty-second?
Yeah, two weeks from the eighth, yep.
Okay.
So I envision either that meeting.
Law will be determined of what happens on the tenth.
All right, we gotta see, I gotta see what happens Friday morning.
Okay. Well, there's gonna be plenty of time to get any supplemental submissions in, if we need to. Based on the tenth, and then of course, Scott, Cameron, we have two Scots. And Paul, Scott, Cameron. I mean, we're looking at maybe the week of the third, getting your additional submissions in-ish.
Right, and, and quite honestly, the majority of the engineers still work with the town. Stormwater management, you know, meeting all their requirements. It's great to get a review of it at our level, but our peer review, if you may, Jason, is Bill Renault.
Sure. And the good thing about what's left on the engineering is a lot of it's going to be interactive. For example, the test pits. You know, they're gonna observe the test pits that Scott Cameron is gonna coordinate with Bill. I think Jason Kearney's gonna dig them like he did in October. Unfortunately, well, I don't know what happened to that data. I don't know if the town has it. I don't know if Haze has it. We don't have it, that, that data from October. And it's a bit of a mystery, but it doesn't, it's neither here nor there because we, because of centering the building.
And it's a bit of a mystery, but it doesn't, it's neither here nor there because we, because of centering the building. A lot of it has to be done anew anyway.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's in the ether somewhere. We, we'll do data and I'll have my own stuff, so.
But, but, but the point I'm making is it is interactive. The town will be observing as that, as it happens. And Scott will be coordinating with Bill Reno as things develop, leading up to his final submission. So it's not like the town will be hearing about it for the first time, leading up to the point in which he does his, his final permit set submission. Or his permit set submission, I won't call it fun. So I'm just trying to kind of backfill the schedule. So we're on the eighth, we know what we're doing there. The 22nd is up in the air a bit based on what happens at TAC.
Yep.
If I, if I may, Chairman Lucy and, and Mr. Tarbell, what what kind of turnaround time wise do you anticipate based on your experience? Can we expect from TAC? Because there has been already a rally of back and forth.
I'd have to check in with Lieutenant Anderson. I don't want to start guessing.
Sure. Yeah, it would all depend on where they're at. I mean, I've, I've seen TAC, I've seen people go three or four meetings with TAC before they get them what they really want, so. If you've had good back and forth, then you're ahead of the game.
Okay.
So I.
I got no idea.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to reiterate what I told you from the beginning, Mr. Pinos, communication will be key. We just have to stay in contact. So you're not wasting time. And before I forget it, it's been asked several times, Wednesday night.
Yeah.
I'm begging you. Be prepared to discuss the owner's experience. I mean, people are going to lose their minds because we've asked so many times. What has he done?
Just, not just what's in your proposal, you know, the proposals of the state. But, you know, some projects that are comparable that we can go look at and see what they've done.
Okay.
All right, with that, I think we have a game plan. And part of the game plan is we're going to need to be nimble after Friday. But we know what we're presenting on Wednesday night. Chip and I, again, some of those things, we don't necessarily need to know Wednesday night, but we wanted to put them out there for you guys to know that people are going to be asking about it.
I think it would be great to have, you know, because you're going to be presenting massing. I think it'd be great to have a bit of a study of the size of the building versus the neighbors, because that was asked a couple of different times.
If we can come up with that.
Yeah, maybe too quick. It may be too quick, but if you can.
Well.
If you could commit to it and it's underway, I think that will go a long way for the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Because the other thing is, is I know you want submissions Friday before. You know.
Yeah, I think, I think probably, I think probably present this Wednesday night and just tell people you're doing a, great, what have we called it before?
Context study.
A, a what?
People call it context study sometimes, there's other terms.
A context study, yeah, just, you know, and that that will be presented at the next meeting. I study whatever you want to call it.
Right.
Massing study.
Yeah.
And that will give you time to present it and fit, and do it. And then have it to us. You know, early enough that we can look at it and understand it.
Okay.
Cause I gotta say, you, you know, you, you've requested, we, we don't jointly operate this way, Mr. Pinos, but you said you don't want to talk scale the project units. That's still front of mind for people. That they, they've waited for the traffic now, so they're going to want to revisit that. 100% for sure. And put me in that camp too, so. This context study will be helpful. It won't.
I mean, we did present something similar. I, we just have to redo it, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that basically this whole design had to be redone to accommodate centering the building, which is, so we, we've almost started over in many respects. And that's why it's been taking so long. And we had a massive change in the design team. I mean, we went from his engineering to more Cameron. So getting Scott, who I've worked together now, how long? 13 years. At least, you know, he's meticulous and that's, that's why we wanted him on the team. So yes, there has been a little delay, but I think we're, I hope. I think internally, we're on the right track in, in getting this project back on track. However, it's, it's substantially different. I think everybody can agree than what we first presented to the town and presented in our application materials. There's some overlap. We won't, we won't give you another existing conditions plan, for example. I mean, you already have that. But for everything else that's impacted by this site design, you're going to get, and you're going to get it the way you should get it. And I'm, I'm, I'm glad that, that the traffic analysis is well underway. So onward and upward.
Yep, and hopefully there, there continues to be significant changes to this project in terms of size, so. I'll leave it at that. And anything else? Chip, you got anything?
No, I'm good. We'll, we'll do this on Wednesday.
Any other questions, Mr. Pinos? I think we have a plan.
And they're, we're pretty much the only continued hearing, right?
Yeah, the other forty be on the hot too.
Yeah. So those are the two continued.
Yep. I believe you're first up too, so if you can have your team ready to roll at seven. That would be good. And I'll have any technical errors on. So again, thank you patience and.
Well, I, I'm sorry, before you wrap up, when do you think you're going to go live? Because I think the governor's mandate runs out in July, doesn't it?
I think what they're looking for is a room that can handle live and remote. So it's a bit of a hybrid. And I think that's going to be in the public safety building. Tom, to the best of my knowledge, we haven't heard whether, I think that room has been in tests. But had, they haven't loved the Zoom aspect.
Yeah, I, I can't wait to get back to live for me, you know.
Yeah, I do much better live with plans in front of me.
I bet.
So we're, we're pushing, we're pushing.
A little more interactive without a doubt. And, and what triggered it was, you know, normally when we do presentations, I'll have the architect bring what I, what I call coffee posters, you know, little samples of materials and that type of thing. We pass it out. It's a little more interactive and conversational. Yeah, anyways, it is what it is and we'll get there when you're ready.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and look, we'll see.
Are we doing any public comment, Tom, or not?
I suppose we could.
I don't know that we need to.
But it's generally not done at subcommittees. Is there, I see three members of the public here. Is someone dying to say something? Otherwise, I, I, I will recommend to the three people that are here.
Come Wednesday.
Come Wednesday, let your neighbors know if they're interested that it, it's happening on Wednesday night. We, we've had a few stops and starts here, but to Mr. Pinos's point, I think we're now hitting more of a stride where we're going to have some meetings of substance, so. Okay, I don't see anyone trying to take advantage of that. So with that, gentlemen, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and we'll see you folks on Wednesday night.
See you Wednesday night. Thank you, thank you.